I'd like to call it to order, tonight's meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice in its own right.
You're in charge to make sure the flag is outside the screen. Okay, with the tires suited to the screen, please. Please.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to start off by introducing to you our staff and planning commission members tonight. First of all, we have with us tonight Chris McKenzie, which is our county attorney. And then we have Mr. Bob Schwartz. Bob represents Bolling Green District. Leon Smith represents the Reedy Church. I'm Carol Horton from Port Royal. We also have George Weaver, the Madison District. We have Purcell Minor. He is with Mattapanai District. For other staff members, we have down on the front row, Mr. Mike Fincham. Mike is head of our planning for Caroline County. Craig Pennington, another planner, here in the green shirt. And Ms. Lisa Zek, she is a planning assistant for the county. Okay? Tonight, first on our docket, we have RZ 062020. So do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board or commission. First case tonight, RZ 062020. Applicants requesting approval of a rezoning of Tax Map Parcel 41-A-99A from RP Conditional Rural Preservation to RP Unconditional in order to remove the proffers associated with the previous rezoning, RZ 032012, prior to the sale of the property. The applicant states that they are relocating to the Fredericksburg area in order for her spouse and herself to be closer to medical care. Parcel was previously rezoned to RR2 Rural Residential 2 from RP in 1997 in order to allow for subdivision of the land. In 2012, the parcel was rezoned from RR2 back to RP to allow for the applicant to construct a family apartment for her daughter on RZ 032012. It was during this rezoning that the proffers were put in place regarding the family apartment on the property, as the rezoning created a non-conforming lot and the proffers were approved to mitigate the potential issues of creating the non-conforming lot. The proffers state that the family apartment is to only be utilized by the applicant's daughter until such time as the medical care is no longer necessary. The family apartment could then be rented out to other family members but not the general public. The proffers also state that the family apartment must be removed when no longer in use. The proffer statement for RZ 032012 is included in your packet as Attachment A. Under the present zoning, the proffers continue in effect with this parcel even if the land is sold. As such, future owners cannot utilize the family apartment other than converting to a storage building. The rezoning of this parcel, as requested, would remove the proffers and allow new owners' full use of the apartment as a second dwelling unit for family or rental, per Article 4, Section 3.4 of the zoning ordinance in this attachment B. The Caroline County Comprehensive Plan depicts this area as agricultural preservation. A family apartment would be consistent with this designation.
Okay, so when you're saying a family apartment would be consistent, but you're not saying non-family member apartment consistent, you're saying family members consistent with this?
So currently, the zoning ordinance allows for family apartments on rural preservation parcels. The family apartment ordinance states that it can be rented out to family only for the first three years, and after that first three years, it can be rented to anyone.
Oh, okay. All right. You may have more questions, of course. Okay. Do we have any with the applicant? Is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to make any presentation or say anything before we have the public hearing? I'm sorry, I can't hear. Yeah.
She stated that she provided medical documents to show that why her and her husband needed to move more closer to the Fredericksburg area. We did not put the medical documents in your packets due to laws, but she did provide medical documents as to why they need to be closer to medical care.
Okay. All right. Was there anything else, ma'am, that you wanted to say? Okay. All right. Well, if there's something else at this time, we're ready for the public hearing. Okay? So right now, I'm going to open up the public hearing for RZ 062020. Is there anyone that'd like to speak on this matter at this time? So, no one? Would anyone like to speak on the matter of this rezoning at this time, on RZ 062020? Anyone else? Last call, public hearing. Claire, the public hearing closed. Commissioners, do you have questions? Okay, this is a map of it, correct, Mr. Pennington? And one thing, is it like a right-of-way to this property? It looks landlocked.
The, you can see a road coming off of Page Road, a gravel drive coming off of Page Road, and so that's a shared driveway for the, that, the front lot, Ms. Johnson's lot, and other lots behind that.
So the shared road is to the left here?
It's to the east of the property line. And so if you look at the property line, you can see the two gray stripes running up. That would be the shared driveway.
Okay. All right. It's like a, so it's a right-of-way to this property, I would imagine?
It's an easement, but yes. It's, yes.
Yeah, an easement to that property, because I don't see where it's in. Okay. So... So what they're asking is to have the property rezoned, because if they sell it, possible sale, and whoever buys it could, there's two dwellings on the property, right? The house and the apartment?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the apartment could be rented out to non-family members?
As it stands right now, if the, this rezoning were to fail, and the previous rezoning stay in place on the property, then once the property is sold, the new owners would not be able to utilize the family apartment for anything other than storage, such as a shed, because of the way the proffers were on RZ 032012.
Okay. But you were saying something about that after three years, then it's possible to rent it to non-family members?
In a normal family apartment situation, yes. However, the proffers for RZ 032012, if you look at them in your packet, then proffer number... Proffer number four says "non-family prohibited." And so in most scenarios, yes, a family apartment, after three years of renting to a family member, you may rent it to someone outside of your family. In this case, that does not apply. This can only be rented to family members while Ms. Johnson resides on the property. And so once she moved, this proffer would not allow for anyone else to use it as a family apartment or rent it to anyone outside of the family. They could not use it for anything but a storage shed.
I mean, is it, well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is this the way it's normally done?
No. This property was rezoned in 1997, as I said, to allow for a subdivision of two acres. That rezoning to RR2 did not allow for family apartments on RR2. So they applied for another rezoning in 2012 to turn it back to RP to allow for a family apartment to be constructed for her daughter to move into and provide medical care to Ms. Johnson and her husband. And so now they're at the sale of the property, and the proffers that were associated with the most recent rezoning will not allow the future owners to utilize this as any type of apartment, family or otherwise.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is, I mean...
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg. It seems to be if this board decides that this application should be denied, then we're basically affecting the value of that piece of property. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Yeah, I understand that part.
So, I mean, the way it was rezoned before, okay, and the proffers were established, they could use that as an apartment. And if we were to deny this application, then the value of that piece of land is going to be decreased.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just making sure I understand. That's all I'm saying.
My only concern would be how often are we going to come across this situation? Because basically what we're saying is now we have two dwellings on this property, just 10 acres, right?
Uh, no, ma'am.
It's, I thought...
It's only two.
Oh, two, two acres, okay.
It's only, yeah, it's only a little bit over two acres.
So we have two, two in rural area with two, basically two dwellings.
That's correct.
So they're just...
As to how many, how often this situation would come up, there aren't many situations like this that I'm aware of.
Yeah, not right now. I'm just wondering in the future. So that would be, you know, my only concern. You start, you know, doing it, then you set a precedence. Other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. First off, Godspeed to Mr. and Mrs. Johnson with their health issues. We certainly hope everything comes out well for you in the end. I think initially, the change in the zoning was an accommodation due to the health issues that the Johnsons were having. So we tried our best at that time to be accommodating and help them out with the rezoning. Now we need to, or they're asking that we remove that rezoning and revert to something else. So I think we need to get back to where we started before the change. If we opened this piece of property up to a rental house, then like Dr. Horton said, we are setting a precedent for other, other properties in that area, and I don't think that's a bridge we want to try to cross.
And I think, I think exactly what Bob said was the way I was feeling, okay? I think when this came to the board originally, it wasn't accommodation for people who needed help. And I just, and that's why I talked about the value of the piece of property. Whatever the value of that piece of property is today, if we decide that we should not allow this apartment to be there, then we're changing the value of that piece of property. However, we changed it once before to accommodate the condition. And like Bob said, I just think if we, if we continue to do this type of adjustments to go back to where things were, then I think we've kind of opened up a bag of worms. Just an opinion.
Any other comments from the commission? I mean, I certainly do empathize with the situation. But it does concern me a little bit, two acres, and basically what we're saying is there's going to be two homes here in a rural area on this, there is now, with the exception that, you know, they both have to be related. But in the future, we're saying they won't have to be related, and I'm just wondering if, you know, new owners would come back and ask for something else? Split the property, or, you know?
The property can't be split any smaller.
Two acres is already pretty small for...
Two acres?
Two homes that are not in a subdivision.
Minimum lot size for the RP District is 10 acres. However, you can do a family subdivision for two acres. And so two acres...
Yeah, so it's down to the minimum right now.
And Madam Chair, if you look at an aerial view of the property, these two structures are very close together. So I don't see how you could split it by any magic line drawn.
So Greg, at that time, the planning commission passed it and went to the Board of Supervisors. Now it's coming back to us?
No, the rezoning from 2012 to turn it from RR2 back to RP was passed. This is a new rezoning where she's asking it to be rezoned from RP with proffers that doesn't allow anyone to utilize the family apartment, to be RP with no proffers where the new owner would be able to utilize the family apartment.
So right now, if a family member's not using it, it would be like, it would be storage or garage or...
The new owner as a family member couldn't even use it. If the, if...
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying a new owner, it would have to be a garage, storage area...
They'd have to pull, they'd have to pull the kitchen out, because it's not allowed to have a kitchen in it if it's not a family apartment. So they'd have to pull the kitchen out, all the appliances from the kitchen, and then they could use it as a storage building.
So now, if, if somebody bought that piece of property, assuming that this application is turned down, they could come back in and do the same thing, could they not?
They would have to apply for a rezoning to be able to utilize that for anything other than a shed.
Thank you.
And by tearing out the kitchen, basically we're saying remove the refrigerator and stove, is that correct?
I would have to look into it. I believe the outlet for the stove has to be removed as well, so that a new stove can't just be put in there. So it would require some electrical work.
And that's minimal electrical work at that. Just throw that in.
Any other thoughts or do you even like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, please. Whereas rezoning request RZ 062020 for Ernest and Yolanda Johnson appears to be generally inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan and future land use map, and whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the denial of this request, I recommend that RZ 062020 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of denial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
So this will go to the Board of Supervisors, and they'll be making the final decision?
Yes, this still needs to go to the Board of Supervisors. They make the final decision as to whether it passes or fails.
Okay. All right. Next, tonight, we have the text amendments in regards to the kennels, correct? Okay. So is, we have a staff report on 132020. Is that the first one you have, Mr. Pennington?
Yes, and we can hold a public hearing together and just have separate motions on the text amendment?
Three, four, five, six. There's six?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, well then...
Five, it's five, five.
One, two, three, four, five. Correct, five.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This text amendment is being presented for a public hearing to modify the definition of commercial kennel to differentiate between indoor and outdoor kennels, and add or modify the use in the B1 and M1 zoning districts. An existing business in Lady Smith is seeking expansion opportunities which necessitates an amendment to the definitions to allow the expansion to occur. The proposed amendments are as follows. TXT 132020, a text amendment to Article 2 Definitions to repeal the definition of commercial kennel and replace it with definitions for indoor and outdoor commercial kennel. Definition being repealed, it's kennel, commercial, any kennel which includes breeding, boarding, training, and selling of animals, to be replaced with indoor, any kennel without outdoor pens or runs, in which dogs or domesticated animals are bred, boarded, trained, sold, all for a fee or compensation. And commercial kennel outdoor, any kennel with outdoor pens or runs, in which dogs or domesticated animals are bred, boarded, trained, or sold, all for a fee or compensation. TXT 142020 is a text amendment to modify Article 9 B1 Business, Section 2 Uses By Right, to add Paragraph 32 for commercial kennel indoor as a by right use in the B1 District. TXT 152020 is to amend Article 9 B1 to allow commercial kennel outdoor as a special exception use in the B1 District. TXT 162020 is a text amendment to modify Article 10 M1 to replace kennels with commercial kennels indoor as a by right use, and to add commercial kennel, TXT 17 is to add commercial kennels outdoor as a special exception use.
Okay, so we're kind of changing the wording of some of these text amendments. Are any of these question, are any of these something that we went over when we were dealing with all the kennels?
No.
Couple of years back?
No, the kennels that we had were in the RP zoning district where they're permitted by special exception.
Okay.
Currently, besides RP special exception, kennels are only permitted in the industrial M1 zoning district.
Okay.
So this would separate kennels to indoor and outdoor kennels, and would allow indoor kennels to be a by right use in B1 Business and M1 Industrial, and outdoor kennels to be a special exception use in B1 Business and M1 Industrial.
So is it going to apply to all kennels, even the ones that might have a special exception in a rural area?
No. No, that, special exception in RP would still remain special exception in RP, whether it's an indoor or an outdoor kennel.
Okay. Any other questions of staff before we? You said we can do one public hearing on this.
You can do one public hearing, we have to have five motions.
Okay. If there's no questions of staff, I'm going to open this up now for public hearing. So this is five text amendments concerning the definitions of kennels. Do I have anyone that'd like to come forward and speak on this issue? Anyone have any comment on this issue? Text amendments 13, 14, 15, 16, 17? Last chance, anyone like to come forward and speak? Care, the public hearing closed. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion. Okay? I'd like to make a motion on TX 132020, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TX 132002, I recommend that this be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
TX 132020, just, I think you just understated it. TX 132020.
He said 2020, but...
Yeah, but just clarifying for the record.
Thank you, Sean. 2020.
Uh, Bob, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Anybody else? We're up to text amendment 14 now.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT 142020, I recommend that TXT 142020 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
TX 152020, that's amendment, Article 4, B1 Business, Section 3, Use Minus, Special Exception, to add Paragraph 22 as part. 22 Commercial Kennel, I would want to... Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrant approval of, warrant approval of TX 142020. I recommend that the, the board should provide a recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Text amendment 16? You want to try it?
Text amendment 162020, where the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrant approval of TX 15... TX 162020, I recommend to be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll bring up the rear, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices, warrants the approval of text amendment 172020, I recommend that we forward it to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I know we've got to discuss dates for our November-December meeting. Do you want to do that before we get into solar?
Yes, you can, you can go ahead and do the meetings for November and December.
Okay. So what we need is to set up a date, correct?
Yes, currently, the November meeting falls on the 24th of Thanksgiving. No, I'm sorry, it's not the 24th. 24th is in December.
So you're saying Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve?
Yes, the, the...
And you're not going to be here?
November meeting falls on Thanksgiving. It is the 26th, and so staff is recommending that we move the meeting to November 19th, the week before.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Somebody's got a motion, right? Chris, do we need, Mr. McKenzie, do we need a motion to move that meeting? Okay. So November 19th?
Aye.
Right, and the December meeting falls on Christmas Eve, and so staff is recommending we move the meeting a week earlier to the 17th.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, do we have, staff like to get up and give us some type of report on the proposed text amendments for the solar facilities? And I know I have some commissioners that have some questions and comments, because I was already told that.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, staff met with industry representatives to discuss the solar regulation, the draft solar regulations on September 8th. You have a number of attachments in your packet. I am going to work off of two. One is Attachment 2, which is the Solar Energy Overlay District Black Line Industry Comments. So those are the comments that were provided by the industry representatives pursuant to our meeting on September 8th. You also have a document, which is the Black Line 092420 Planning Commission, which are the, is the revision staff made after the last planning commission meeting, but in preparation for our meeting with the industry representatives on September 8th. So those are the two documents. One is my amendments that we discussed at the meeting, and the other is the industry's responses to those modifications. I thought tonight, the commission has had a little bit longer period of time to look at the various comments and the draft ordinance, and I would like to hear any comments... to hear any, uh, comments that Commission members may have, uh, as we work towards, uh, finalizing, uh, a draft for public hearing.
Mr. Fincham, the, um, the copy that is marked up, black line from the industry, okay?
Yes, sir.
All the industry comments that are in red, um, you reviewed all those comments that they've gone through?
I have not reviewed all of them in detail. I, uh, those are their suggested language that we strike from the ordinance, and the light blue underline is their suggested language that be added to the ordinance.
Okay. As you know, I, I called the office today because I couldn't understand the difference between the light blue and the dark blue, so I, I got a little confused with that, okay? So the light blue on the industry document is how they would like the wording.
Their suggested language, uh, for wording for that particular section, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm always supposed to have two documents, right? Their suggestions and ours.
That's correct. There was a couple of other documents, but those were clean versions that, that, um, I'm more comfortable working off the black line version, so that way we, we all know what, um, what, what we're referring to.
Well, I had to be honest, Mr. Fincham, I looked this over very, very carefully, almost word for word. Um, I have to say, first of all, I think staff has done an excellent job. A lot of this data and information about solar energy, um, is a little over everybody's head. Um, I think, and I believe, and, you know, board can say whatever they wish, but I think it's time that we consider bringing this out to public hearing for next month. I would like to hear from the industry people directly, and I would also like to hear from the general public. There are questions that are being asked, and, and as I have said, um, to me, solar energy is something I would like discussed in layman's terms. Meaning, you know, you, you put up this little box over here and you get the, get the light from the sun, and now how does that become electric that we can actually use? And is this going to not only help the county, is it going to help the general constituents that are out there? In other words, if we're saving money, and I know this is a state mandated situation where state has decided that it's time that we reduce our use of fossil fuels, and I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying, are there going to be benefits that if these cup, if these type of projects come into us and we think they're a good project, is this going to help, uh, Mr. and Mrs. General Public? In other words, okay, we're going, which, I know it's going to better the world environment, but is it going to help out Mr. Smith with his electric bills? And I'd like to hear that, and I'm not, Mike, believe I'm not putting any of the pressure on you, I'd like it here, to hear it from some of the industry people, so we can ask the, that type of question and, and let them answer to us, because I don't really know, again, I, I mean it when I say layman's terms, how do we take this panel, we put it up here and we get the, get the sun baking on it, now how does that become electric? And where does that electric source go to? Okay? And I went by and I looked at the, the one storage plant, the storage, it's not a building, uh, storage facility over there by St. John's. And when I looked and I saw where the lines were, I got a pretty good idea of at least something that I was looking at, okay? But I just think that maybe it's time that we bring this out to the general public and see what the general public thinks of it. That's all I have to say.
Staff is continuing to make edits to its version. Do you want to go to public hearing with any additional edits that staff makes to the nine twenty-four twenty document? Um, or do you want to go to public hearing with the document as it is written?
Well, let me, let me ask you this, uh, are the changes that staff is going to be making to this document going to be great massive changes to this document, or small changes? You tweaking this and tweaking that, or, I mean, I know we've been talking about the buffer zones and distances and so forth and so on. Now, I mean, if you feel it's time to hold it up for another month, I'm not trying to push this forward, I'm not trying to rush this, I just think that it's time that as, as a group, we can sit there and ask a person and say, just like I asked the question, is this going to help Mrs. Smith with her electric bill? So, I mean.
I'm, I'm okay either way, I, I'm not advocating that we necessarily don't go to public hearing, but the changes may be substantial enough between this document and a future document that it would necessitate a, 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 an additional public hearing based upon the changes. For example, w- we've looked at the buffers, um, the, the distance of the buffers from the transmission line, so we initially, we saw it out at a half, now that we're at a mile, w- we are contemplating, uh, for a number of reasons, expanding that buffer to two miles. Um, so you're basically doubling your, your, your area that would be included, um, in the overlay district, uh, from one mile to two miles. That, that could be a fairly significant e- expansion in terms of, of, uh, including additional acreage with, within the buffer area.
Okay, so you, you basically feel then, um, the changes that are going to be made between now and the next, um, next document that you're going to give us, uh, there could be enough changes that maybe it's, we should wait?
Well, or, or if you'll allow me to go ahead and make those changes, s- um, and include those in what we advertise for the public hearing, so if you're comfortable, um, if we go out with a two mile buffer and the Commission ultimately says, no, we think it should stay a mile, well, you're making a change that's more restrictive, so I think you could make that change without having to go back to public hearing. There may be some other provisions that you're making a little bit less restrictive that might qualify as, as a, a substantial change that we would have to go to public hearing. We've also talked about reformatting a little bit, I'm comfortable doing that and getting it in, into the format, uh, and we've talked about a couple of issues that, that perhaps need to be moved from one section to, to another section.
Right.
If you're comfortable with letting me make those changes, and the changes that Go ahead and, and, and let me make it a little bit broader when we advertise it so that we don't have to go back for, for a change like that, and then we can discuss those changes in detail, um, at the public hearing.
Well, I, I just want the Commission to understand, um, I have looked at a lot of these maps and distances and so forth and so on, and, and I've discussed it with Mr. Fincham over the phone, and, um, I understand some of the logic about making the, the overall buffer areas larger, because the amount of land that some of these facilities is going to take up, they need more than a mile, because otherwise they're going to be outside the zone and we're going to lose them as far as a development. So, I mean, I don't, I don't ever want this, this county to get hurt in any shape, manner, or form. I want this Commission and the Board of Supervisors to always be in control of anything that comes up as far as this type of zoning, okay, and this type of approval. But I also don't want to go on with this for the next twenty-five years, okay, and I, I'm being honest about that. And we started this a long time ago when we've tweaked it and tweaked it and tweaked it and tweaked it, tweaked it. And I just think that, I really think it's time to take it to the public, okay? Even if there's small changes that have to be made, okay, allow, allow our, our planning director to make these changes. And then we can look at it at that time, even if it's, even if, even if it's in front of the public. But I think it's time to hear what the public has to say about what we're proposing.
If you're comfortable with me making those changes, I, I can incorporate those and, in time for those to be advertised for public hearing.
Well, see, I can only speak for myself, so I mean, this is, these are all my friends up here, and, and I want to make sure that, you know, we're going in the right direction, but I just think that, um, the state has mandated that we reduce our fossil fuels, and this poor little county over here has to do something in a fairly good amount of time, because there are people out there that are interested in putting in solar facilities into Caroline County. I don't want us to lose the control, but I also don't want to hold up so long that those people that are interested suddenly go to another county, just being arbitrary. That's all I have to say.
Um, I do have a question, Mr. Fincham, uh, and I think I asked this before, but I missed the last meeting, so I missed the planning of the last meeting. Is this, does this go to the Board of Supervisors, or is this just us?
Board of Supervisors.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You make a recommendation.
So, okay, all right, so, I mean, I mean, I don't mind waiting, to wait, see what staff has for us, but on the other hand, if there's a public hearing, this won't be the other, only public hearing, correct? There'll be one with the Board of Supervisors.
There'll be one at the board, and again, i- if, if you allow me to go ahead and make the modifications so that we don't have to come back, um, then there won't be a second one at the planning commission unless you all just want to have a second one.
And so you're going through this and, and staff's evaluating it and using what you think, I'm, I'm looking at the industry recommendations, industry comments, seeing what you consider, you know, of this that should be needed, and putting it into staff comments and recommendations, correct?
Yes, and making those edits to the planning commission version, yes, sir.
So is there, is there anything else you need from us at this time, other than our comments on what we think about?
Um, your comments and, and then a decision as to whether you want to go ahead and advertise for public hearing. Now, we, uh, remember, we also working on the site visit for, for the Commission?
Right.
Um, is, we're looking at early Octo, uh, middle October?
Late.
Mid, mid sec?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Nineteenth, twentieth, or twenty-first of October are the dates that we are looking at to go visit a, um, a solar facility. We are also trying to, um, identify a facility that will host us that is under construction so that you, we can actually look at, um, a facility that's in the process of being developed. Uh, we, we have not yet been able to sec- secure a, a site visit, uh, to such facility, although, um, Mr. Schwartz has, has found one on the side of Route three sixty that we can look at from the edge of the right of way, if necessary, so.
So there may be an opportunity, I mean, some of us have already been, but there may be another opportunity before our next planning commission meeting.
Y- yes, ma'am, that would be before your next meeting, so you could go ahead and advertise the public hearing if you so desire, and we will be able to have that site visit before, uh, you have a public hearing, uh, the following week.
Mike, uh, do you think you have, listened to all the ins and outs of solar through the solar companies, that you can actually document what you, we're going to put on paper now? Do you think, do you think you have all that information now, or do you think you need more?
I think at this point in time, we're down to, to making tweaks to the ordinance, okay? Um, I'm not, I don't think there're going to be wholesale changes, um, to, to the draft ordinance, I think it's massaging the language, getting an understanding on, you know, I use some terminology, the industry reps use, use other terminology, well, there's a difference between that terminology, and there's a reason that I use my terminology and they use their terminology, so there's got to be a comfort level, um, in massaging that, that language, um, so that we, you know, we're comfortable knowing what this, this change means and how it, it, it affects our administration of those regulations. Um, I'm not going to profess to be an industry expert, I've got a lot of documentation that I've gathered and read through, but admittedly, I don't know the ins and outs of, of the solar industry, so, um, there's, there's some reliance by me on the industry, uh, representatives because they have that knowledge that I don't.
I was just, I was just wondering, because I know the industry changes back and forth, I mean, it could be one thing today and next day it'd be something else, but I'm just curious to know that, do you think you have enough information now from what you have been exposed to, to be able to, to be able to put that on documents?
The ultimate recommendation that gets advertised is, is going to be, I mean, I will take the information they provide, but it, there may be areas where we just have to agree to disagree, and in that case, you're going to have my represent, my recommendation, and they can argue their point at the public hearing.
Okay.
So, Mike, we do have site visit, through the following month, there'll be a public hearing on this.
Um, if you go to public hearing in October, it would be the next week.
Or within a, within a few days.
I'm sorry, the same week.
Yeah, so what they're saying is site visit, and then the same week, public hearing, but of course, we don't necessarily have to vote on it, yeah, but if we do make any major changes, then we have to have another public hearing.
Potentially.
Potentially.
It, you could, you can always be more restrictive, you can't be less restrictive without going back to another public hearing. And it's, and I'll, I'll let Chris, um, give you the, the legal side as well, but wh- when you advertise, when you go to a rezoning, for example, you can always make something more restrictive, but you can't make it less restrictive. So, for example, you can advertise one density and then let, make a change to the, to the application and allow more density for, for a project. Um, so, you know, at the end of the day, that's just something that, that I'll keep in the back of my mind and, and, and be cautious as, as I finalize a document.
Well, one other question.
Yeah, it just, it has to do with the notice given to the public, so to, to the extent that the change is so significant that, that the notice given, it no longer sufficiently surprises the public of what you're considering, that's when it needs to be redone.
In other words, if we hadn't given the public enough information?
Right, right, they, then, you know, I mean, the, the scenario is somebody, you know, as advertised, not concerned about it, doesn't show up, but the change is so significant that now they would be concerned about it and they aren't, aren't given the opportunity to speak because it wasn't, it wasn't advertised.
Wasn't advertised correctly. Well, okay, Chris, a couple of things that I looked at, Michael, that you and I had talked about was, um, for instance, the, the, uh, the screening that is required, and we started to talk about how opaque can it be? Number of trees, can you see between it? And, um, I don't know how you actually, and I read through this fairly carefully, um, there is nothing here that really describes the density that we want to create to not see these facilities, and meaning when you get to a corner, if somebody owns a whole corner block and there's one on the corner, you get to the corner of that street, you're going to see it, there is no way, I'm just, I'm asking that question because, I mean, we were looking for a certain density to not be able to see it, but we, we must have the flexibility to be able to say. the flexibility to be able to say, okay, when something comes in front of us, there is no way in heck that they could make it so you can't see it. So, I mean, this is, this is not a simple process as far as I'm concerned. So.
That's correct. Landscaping and buffering in particular, you know, the idea is to protect the abutting occupied properties from the visibility impacts of a project. You know, I started out with a fairly stringent standard, 100% opacity, okay? Well, you may or may not be able to achieve that. You may be able to achieve that with something other than just plantings, but at the same time, landscape berm, for example, a berm. You know, that may or may not be something that the industry typically does and is a cost consideration for the industry. I don't know that it, staff, I have worked through that issue yet. But certainly we can, you know, maybe we advertise the opacity standard and, you know.
Well, we talked about the possibility of when you can't reach that point, if you increase the size of the buffers, then you're pushing their facilities further away from the visibility. So that's another way of possibly changing this. The only thing is, I mean, I just don't know how you, guys, I got to be honest, I don't know how you put this down in black and white. That's what I'm saying to you. Okay? I mean, I know what we're talking about. I know what we're trying to do. And that's why I think it's time to go to a public hearing. That's just my opinion again. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have gone through these documents with a fine toothed comb. There are some things that disturb me, some things that I think need clarification. And I don't know if you want to go into them here on the record or via email, which is also via record, but I do have some difficulty. The legislative process is understood, not necessarily not understood by anyone on this panel, but certainly Mr. Bowers and Mr. McKenzie and I understand the legislative process. We understand how lobbyists work to get laws passed. Five years down the road, when the political winds change, we may be in an entirely different boat, and solar power will be somewhere else and there'll be something else coming down the highway. The main thing that we can do at this point is try to control it as best as possible in this virgin territory. So in going through these documents, I do have some concerns. And here again, at your pleasure, whether we do it in this forum or via email, I do think that the final draft needs a slight bit more tweaking before we present it to the public or their scrutiny. Because if it's incomplete to me or to us, it's definitely going to be incomplete to the public. So in all fairness, I think probably one more tweak and we should probably be ready for a public hearing on it. And that's just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Is it enough, Bob, that it should be, I mean, can you sit down with staff and deal with it that way? Or is it something that we should have another work session on? Or does anybody else have any major concerns? I mean, I have a few, but...
That's what I was talking about, Carol, when I was talking about the opacity around the area, okay? And should we increase the buffers? There are all, in all this paperwork, there are always the small questions that want to stick out. And as much as staff has worked as hard as they can, we're coming up with the wrong questions, which means that somebody else out there is going to come up with a question. You know, I mean, I wish I could believe that, that staff could give us all the answers that we're going to ask. But they're never going to be able to do that. And I would like to see what Bob has in mind, okay? I mean, I'd rather look at, you put in an email, Bob, and I'll look at it, you know that, okay? I guess the problem is the fact that we can keep doing this. And that's what I'm concerned about, guys. We just keep doing this. We want to make this a little bit better, and like this a little bit better, and that a little better. And I'm not sure that we're going to ever get to that point where, when John Q. Public asks a question, that we're going to have the answer.
The train has to stop somewhere, sometime.
I know. I'm sorry. That's just the way I feel, Bob. Now, again.
Oh, I'm with you.
I'll look at all the emails you want to send me, okay? And I'll email you and I'll back and forth, email with everybody.
Yes.
I just think that somewhere along the line, we have to stop the train and say, guys, let, okay, we're three quarters of the way down the track. I think it's time that we now tell the public that there's the station over there.
I agree with you.
And let them say, okay, here's what we think. That's all I'm saying. And I appreciate what you said, Bob. Because that's why I was asking about the trees and the buffers and things like that. Because as much as it says certain things in here, what Mike and staff are thinking about may not be what Carol is thinking about when she reads that.
They're not defined.
That is correct. That's all.
Is there, Bob, is there anything major enough that you think you should bring it up tonight? Or, I mean, because I...
Double check my, my knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, if there's something big, I don't, well, I'm not ready to proceed. I mean, if there's something big, I, you know, I, I could probably go either way, but I don't want to rush it.
Right. I would, the two biggest question marks that I saw right offhand was the omission of the word abandonment. And I don't know why that was, but I think that was an industry request to strike that. And I just don't think we should leave that open-ended. And I do have a few extra notes on that. However, anticipated under 23.10, anticipated timeline, it just sounds a bit open-ended to me. And I think that is why we must include abandonment and define it. What is abandonment? Does that mean that because a facility ceases to operate for a 12-month period, yet they send someone out in the summer to trim the grass around the fence or whatever, maintaining that they are still active at that site? Well, cutting the grass is not active at a solar site. And these are just some of the little areas that, for my clarification, if nothing else.
Okay. I can answer that question for you.
Okay.
You didn't throw me a curve.
Not trying to.
No, I'm fine. The language in abandonment, in terms of what constitutes abandonment, was actually included in 23.10.2. Well, it would end up being under one. So, under the definition of abandonment, there were certain events that if those events occurred, it constituted abandonment of the project, okay? Those have now been incorporated elsewhere in the, in the, in the chapter under the decommissioning provisions.
Okay, so I just didn't loop around?
Yeah, I looped it. So I understand. I can show you where I did that.
Okay, Diana, Mike.
You say it's in 23.10.
Yeah, if you go to page 10, you'll see a little yellow 2 that's been struck through. It's going to be added up to 1. But it says, decommissioning shall be required following a continuous period of 12 months in which, and there are three standards there. If it meets any one of those three standards, then decommissioning is required, which effectively means it's been abandoned.
23.10, number 1?
Yeah, go to page 2, page 10.
My pages aren't numbered.
The black line?
I guess they are. I see it's a red line.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, I got it now.
You're looking at your black line, right?
Black line 09-24-2020 Planning Commission.
Right, right. That's yours. Okay.
Go to page 10.
The only thing you took out of that was decommissioning.
Yeah, second paragraph, you'll see a 2 that has a strike through in it. And in that language says, decommissioning shall be required following a continuous period of 12 months in which, one, the generating capacity falls below 5% of the rated nameplate capacity, two, the solar energy facility has been damaged beyond repair, or three, the expiration of a special exception permit, whichever one of those three occurs first. So that was under abandonment before, Mr. Schwartz. So I just moved it to decommissioning.
Right.
So which one do you want me to refer to as the staff's recommendations as of now? Because I have four copies. So you just read from black line Planning Commission. Is that the one I should be focusing on?
Yes, ma'am. That is staff's draft that, with our language, that we would be proposing for public hearing.
So that's the one you're tweaking right now? Well, what do you all think? Do we have enough information right now? Do we need one more meeting? With a little more clarity? Do you need more time to talk to staff? Or do you want to go ahead with the public hearing and take a chance that we don't really have anything else major?
I think it's time to let the train go down the track. That's my opinion. I've said it before, okay? I just think we can keep, it's like, you know, Bob didn't see what he was looking for on a certain page, but was on another page. I just think that it's time that we put this out there to get the ball rolling along.
Okay. And y'all are aware of which one you're gonna, because I know you've got several copies, which ones you're gonna rely on?
This is the one here that Mike has adjusted and will still continue to make his little tweaks to. Now, whether or not we're going to change the size of the buffers or whatever, but we did talk about going from a mile to two miles or whatever, okay? Now, that's going to be taken care of in here.
Yes, sir. As well as to try to nail down the landscaping and buffering requirements more and just continuing to clean up.
I have to say, Mr. Fincham, even though we're the commissioners up here, are we ready, Mr. Fincham?
I will do whatever the commission wants.
What do y'all want to do? You're going to be visiting the site the same week as our next meeting. Do you want to have a public hearing in October? Or do you want to wait till November?
Well, I think going to look at a site is very important. I agree. But I don't think going to look at a site is going to change what's in this documentation, my opinion. Whatever you guys say is fine with me. I'll go along with it anyway. But I don't think, if I go look at a site, I don't think what's in here is going to change.
Going to a site will give us a better understanding of how a solar facility operates, I think, visually what they look like.
Right.
And I've already voiced my opinion on how, what I think they look like, but I won't do it here.
Yeah, no, I've got that clearly.
Some of us have already been to...
I've got that clearly in my mind, sir.
And I think we're going back to the same as last time. I mean, you know, we can have it next month, or we can postpone it till November. I mean, it's not going to hurt to wait a month if some of y'all feel like waiting a month.
I'd like to see Mr. Fincham tweak it a little bit more.
So you're saying wait till November for the public hearing? I mean, I'm okay with that, too.
Either way, guys.
Wait till November? I mean, I know, you know, you do have, Mr. Weaver, you do have a good point.
No, no.
Apparently 30 days is not, in the long term, is not going to make that.
I am absolutely fine with that.
But we'll try to maybe focus on wrapping it up so that we have a public hearing in November. It won't be the only time, you know, public hearing. It's got to go through board of supervisors. So, okay, I think that's our final decision.
Okay.
Okay. In the meantime, if you would get your comments to me.
I will.
As quickly as possible so that I can address them and, if necessary, incorporate any language into the revised draft. I will also say that waiting to November also allows me to finish up the 20 megawatts and under. Because the majority of the focus has been on the greater than 20. So that would allow us to do both.
Okay. All right.
Pardon?
Oh, that's what we're thinking about. We don't have to, yeah, actually say it till next week.
And that would be November 17th now. So I have one less week.
So instead of postponing it a month, we're postponing it three weeks. Okay. Do we have, do we have any other, under any and all matters? Do we have anything else? Anything else from staff or commissioner? All right. So do I have, at this time, do I have anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, staff, and thank you, commissioners. So I think we're good. All right, I'll see, maybe see some of you all.